Good evening, we're going to call to order. Let's start with the roll call.
Mike Davenport?
Here.
Christopher Espinoza?
Chris?
Christopher Espinoza?
Here.
Thank you. Cheryl Fuller?
Here.
Jenny Hagstrom?
Here.
Trey Pevisich?
Here.
Joanna Waske's Drexler? And Nancy Kupka?
Here, we have a floorless stand for the pledge.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We're going to do our, just so you know, we're going to have our agenda a little out of order today because we have some time we need to set aside for a prolonged closed session. So we're going to have, after the approval of the minutes, we're going to have our first reception of visitors, which is opportunities to talk about anything on which the board will vote. And then we're going to follow up with the second reception of visitors where the person, where you can talk about anything. Both are limited to 30 minutes. Each person is limited to three, and we're going to ask you to please abide by that. Let's start out with, oh, and then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that our next meeting, which is July...
12th.
12th, thank you. July 12th is going to be entirely closed session. Just so people are aware, we will, although we will open an open session and close.
No, we won't. We'll go directly in because we'll take action this evening.
Because we're going to be working on some personnel matters, so it's going to be entirely a closed session. Okay. That said, sorry, I'm just slow today. We need a motion to approve the minutes from the May 17th, 2021 business meeting, the June 2nd, 2021 workshop meeting, and the June 2nd, 2021 closed meeting. So moved. Terry and Joanna.
Trey Pevisich?
Aye.
Joanna Waske's Drexler? Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom?
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka?
Aye. The minutes are approved. Okay, we're going to move on to the first reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. This first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which we are going to vote. The second reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are going to be limited to three minutes, and we're going to ask you to stay to three minutes to provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board. If you need more time, you can address, submit your thoughts in writing to the Board Secretary, Mrs. Nyadak. We're asking when you address the board, you need to come up to the microphone, state your full name. Proceedings are being taped recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes, and they are being sent out live. And then I, as the President, reserve the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant. We appreciate your observation of these protocols. So who would like to address the board on anything we're voting on tonight? Come on.
Hi, my name is Carrie Swinson, and I'm speaking right now specifically on your 2122 district return to in-person instruction plan that was listed in the agenda. And I noticed a few things. I'm not one to write out a whole speech and read from a piece of paper. I like to speak to each one of you and look at you while I'm saying it. There are two items that need to be looked at more as a board and as an admin in that return-to-learn plan. One is, it specifically states that vaccinated and unvaccinated children will be treated differently, in some sort of words like that. We already have enough problems with bullying, with so many other behaviors in a high school situation. We don't need to add more. There should be no separate discrimination or segregation from vaccinated or unvaccinated kids. I have a vaccinated kid, I have an unvaccinated kid. I would not expect them to be treated any differently in a public school setting at all. In turn, in light of that, there's also a 14-day or 10-day quarantine if you're a close contact of somebody that's positive, only for unvaccinated kids, not kids that had it already, not kids that may show immunity, whatever, with no remote instruction available. So basically, in your return-to-learn plan, you're going to send kids home for a two-week period due to possible close contact. I would like to see the data from last semester, how many of the close contacts actually ended up positive after that disruption in learning, for two weeks with no classroom instruction, with no remote learning, with no access to anything. Last year, when we, when students wanted to stay home because they were fearful and they didn't want to come to school, you provided a whole new curriculum for them. Now you're saying this year, the kids that weren't vaccinated, whether a medical reason, a personal reason, whatever reason they had it already, are going to be held to where they just sit there and read a book in their room, smoke pot all day? There's no plan for those kids to be sent home if they're unvaccinated for education. They have lost enough, I've been up here enough almost every other meeting, and now they're going to be penalized. So I'm not exactly, I don't want to hear it comes from IDPH because we're seeing schools all over the state realizing that it's just a mandate, or it's not, it's just a guideline, it's not a mandate. You all need to be responsible for these kids' learning. The next thing we're going to do is put the gold star on their head and create divisiveness. Do you know in middle school, eighth grade, you want to know the conversations about this, what it's regarding? You're a Trumpster because you don't want to get your thing. You're just a sheep, your parents are stupid. That's what's happening to the incoming freshmen about vaccines. This type of segregation based off a vaccine status is going to be divisive, cruel, and it's not okay. And I have kids on both sides of the fence with this. It is not okay to have that in your plan for the fall to specifically state they're going to be treated differently and sent home as a close contact. Last point, what if the person that's a close contact is a vaccinated student? I would think that, you know, how are you going to handle that? Because a vaccinated student's a positive, so we all think that the vaccine is a pathway to normalcy. If a vaccinated person is positive, is an unvaccinated person still going to have to stay home for two weeks? I would think at this...
Then you're out of time.
Okay.
And I will note for anybody else in the audience, this is not an action item. So you got rolling, so it's a report from the superintendent, but it's not an action item.
It says recommendations too, so maybe that should have been clarified.
The action items are listed up here on the screen, so...
Couldn't see that from back there.
Yeah, no, I just, you got calling, so I'll let you...
I can come back up on the next one. Want me to come back up on the next one?
No, you've already exhausted your 33 minutes on this topic.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board on anything we're voting on tonight?
Hello, my name's Don DeKlein, resident of Downers Grove. I came to talk about the critical race theory being, possibly being taught in our schools.
Sir, that's not an action item on tonight's agenda?
You need to wait for the next reception.
You need to wait for the next reception of visitors regarding topics not on...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to... Is there anybody else who wants? Don't, don't sit down, sir. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to the board about anything being voted on tonight?
I have a question. So are you guys deciding? I thought you guys were discussing about whether kids are going to get vaccinated and how you're going to judge kids whether they had vaccinations or not. What is being decided?
Tonight, the items being, action that is being taken are on the screen right now, so that includes personnel reports, financial pages, the school calendar, property liability insurance renewals, employer contributions to 457Bs, 403B retirement plan adoption, resolution of nomination and membership to the Downers Grove Plan Commission, approval to, of the ISBE Consolidated District Plan, approval of request qualifications for the strategic plan, approval of food service program agreement, award of bid for bulk purchasing of CMG supplies, award of bid for copy paper, approval to hold the July 12th, 2021 board meeting entirely in closed session, and action on a uniform grievance complaint. So this first reception of visitors would be for any comments regarding those topics. Then we will move into the next reception of visitors, which is limited to 30 minutes for any topic pertaining to the board. So right now, anybody who would like to address any of those items can come forward.
Hi, I'm a resident of Downers Grove. My name is Chick Briner. I just, as you went through that, said, you're going to hold all your meetings for 2021 in closed door?
No, for July 12th, 2021.
Oh, just the one meeting?
Just one meeting.
Okay, I misunderstood you. I thought...
No, that's a fair question.
No, can't have them all in closed session.
No, no, just July 12th.
Okay.
And ma'am, I'm sorry, for the record, could you state your name again? We missed it.
Chick Briner.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to address the board on anything being voted on tonight? Okay, hearing none, we're going to close our first reception of visitors. We're going to open our second reception of visitors, which is on anything pertaining to District 99. Again, we're going to ask you to limit it to three minutes. And I believe that gentleman was first. I'm sorry, Laura.
In this reception of visitors?
Thank you.
One to 7:10 PM.
My name is DeKlein, Don DeKlein, Downers Grove resident. You know, we just opened our meeting saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and some of that wording was "one nation under God indivisible." And critical race theory is nothing but divisible. It separates, it makes white children think that they are privileged, it makes black and brown students think that they are victims, it makes America look bad. And I think it is just an awful thing that is creeping into our schools, and I hope it doesn't happen here. When, when, how does this happen? Do you vote on this? I know there is possibly a bill that the governor has not signed, making it a law. What if he does make it a law? How do we stop it?
Sir, the reception of visitors is an opportunity for you to address the board. There's no dialogue or interaction.
Okay. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Laura, were you, you were next, or were you...
No.
Okay, sorry, just, just trying to keep moving, okay?
My name is Donald Rath. I've lived in Downers Grove for over 50 years, so I'm a pretty long residence. And I have, three generations of my family have been through the school systems here in Downers Grove. It's a lot of students. I would like to read a draft of a letter I'm sending to the District 99 Board. Right now, it's just a draft, and after our meeting, I'll finish it up and mail it to all the board people. So I'm going to kind of read what I've got here. It's addressed to the superintendent, and the subject is Critical Race Theory, acronym CRT. I've been following this controversy and discussions of critical race theory in the national news media, state legislatures, and local school boards for the last several months. And it seems to have created a very strong pushback at school board meetings across the country by parents of school-aged children. Critical race theory, CRT, refers to an idea that emerged about 40 years ago in academia, particularly a Harvard Law professor. The idea's originators argue that race infuses virtually every aspect of America's social reality. The idea was debatable then, and I think it's debatable today. It appears to follow a Marxist ideology that separates and divides people into separate classes. For example, the oppressors, white supremacists, versus the oppressed, victims. It's a divisive theory that divides people according to the color of their skin. Let's remember, and I do, MKL's dream. "One day, we will live in a nation where we will not be judged by the color of our skin by the content of our character." Pretty profound statement. Currently, six states are enacting or planning restrictions on teaching CRT. Florida has already passed a law banning CRT in their schools. Parents and children in public schools across the country have discovered many administrations have changed the school's curriculum to give priority to racial issues. Schools are imposing CRT views and eliminating a lot of traditional historical accounts. The focus of many progressives today are litigate, relitigating the horrors and record of slavery, which is divisive, and it's hard to understand for me in light of the progress we've made to overcome racial discrimination in this country. We need to celebrate, to me, our progress and also our victories in eliminating discrimination.
Thank you, sir, your time has expired. If you'd like to send your comments to me, my email address is up there on the, on, on the board, or you can just drop it off or mail it to the district office.
My last sentence. "The imposition of controversial ideas such as CRT on K-12 students in the curricula should first be run through the democratic process with the elected school board."
Okay, sir, and sir...
Sir, we have to ask you to stop. We have to ask you to stop.
We need to move on to the next...
Everybody's granted three minutes.
Yep. Okay. Very good.
Good evening, I'm Laura Hoist. I head up Wake Up 99. We have the best, most generous country in the world. We're one nation under God. I will fight to protect our freedoms. I believe there are two genders, male and female. Separate bathrooms and locker rooms must be provided. There is no systemic racism. In our community, we respect each other. We support our police. I've asked you about critical race theory and sex ed education, specifically referring to Senate Bill 818, which is not yet law but is passed through the House and Senate, it's being held by the House, and could at any moment, when Governor Pritzker finds us busy enjoying our holiday, pushing it through. That's what we've seen in Illinois of late. So we are extremely concerned about the mandates in the sex ed bill known as SB 818. No one has yet answered my questions about critical race theory, so let me pose one of them. Are curriculums being redesigned to introduce students to critical race theory? If not now, when? How can we obtain a copy of each curriculum? I'd like to remind you, Hank, that while you said that there can be no interchange at these meetings, under state law, under the school code, members of the public shall be afforded time to comment or ask questions of the board. That means we can ask questions and we can obtain answers because we can't get these answers through FOIA's, and you have a responsibility to answer our questions, all of them. And so I would ask, if this is not the forum that you'd like to answer the questions in, please let me know. I'm available to meet with you. Let me know in the next week or two, at the latest, how we can get all those answers to our questions. When you were elected, you took an oath, solemnly swearing to discharge in your duties of office as school board members to do so in accordance with the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. Both require equal protection. That is, all persons, all constituents, all students must be treated equally under the law. Your actions as a school board member are supposed to comply with the US and Illinois constitutions. Yet, critical race theory may be okay with you. We're concerned. We don't have answers to our questions. We hear silence. The Illinois Board, State Board of Education, teachers' unions, and the state require District 99 to begin CRT training beginning very soon, as early as this fall, and to be enforced by the year 2025. To divide students by the color of their skin, treat them differently, the oppressed and the oppressors, guilty and entitled...
Ma'am, I'm going to have to interrupt you.
...plan to use that innocent-sounding word equity to justify blatant and unequal treatment of our kids. Equity is the opposite of equality.
Ms. Hoist, you're out of time.
I, I need to finish.
No, you're out of time, ma'am. Ma'am, you're out of time.
No, and the end goal is to suspend our personal rights, our property rights, and to seize land and wealth and distribute them according to race.
Cheryl seconds all of this.
You have a duty to represent this community where 74% of the students are white. And they don't need to come to school and feel guilty and be...
We are now in recess?
Recession. Now, to be clear, the reception of visitors is for three minutes per statement. For the record, Ms. Hoist, your questions were answered and were asked and answered in writing. We're going to ask people to remain calm. We're interested in hearing your views, but we are not going to entertain grandstanding, nor are we going to continue to have shouting and carrying on. If we, anybody goes beyond three minutes again, I will end, I will end the reception of visitors. Who would like to speak next?
Hi, would it be possible to get like a 30-second...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Would it be possible to get like a 30-second warning, or...
Absolutely. I'll wait a 30-second.
Thank you very much. I'm not good at math.
No, that's fine.
Hi, my name is Mary O'Dowd. I'm a resident. CRT may be okay with you. The ISBE, teachers' unions, state, require D-99 to begin CRT training beginning this fall, enforced by 2025, to divide students by the color of their skin, treat differently, oppressors feel guilty, or oppressed entitled. Plan to use that innocent-sounding word equity to justify the blatant unequal treatment of our kids.
My apologies.
Equity, the opposite of equality, is rejected by critical race theorists as supporting white supremacy. End goal, to suspend personal and private property rights, seize land and wealth, and redistribute along racial lines. CRT is racist. It is discriminatory. It is evil. It is wrong. It will damage our children. We reject it. You have a duty to represent this community, 74% white students, by standing up to those who are pushing CRT and foster excellence, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development for each and every one of our students, regardless of skin color. Reject CRT. "The imposition of ideas such as CRT on K-12 students in the curricula must first be run through the democratic process with the elected school board. An open public forum of discussions and debate on the content and merit of introducing CRT must be allowed so the parents of District 99 students can approve its introduction into the curriculum." Thank you.
Excuse me, can I ask a clarifying question?
Certainly.
Three people have given me, have stated dates when this is going into effect. What is your source for that, since nothing's...
We're not aware of any state mandate to implement critical race theory in our schools from any, any government...
Sometimes, sometimes, I beg your pardon, sometimes it's not called CRT, but the, the base is there, the, the system, equity, diverse, diversity, inclusion, that type of language is seeping in to many aspects of our students' lives and their curricula. So it, it might not be called CRT, but we feel strongly that it is present and a danger.
Thank you for clarifying, but what is the source for when all this is going into effect? Because I, I have not seen anything related to that.
You know, I don't have my notes right now, but, and it may not be the exact date, but certainly...
It's on the governor's desk. It's already gone through some part of legislation. I'm not that familiar with this.
If someone or anybody in the audience that references this, I am not at all aware of any law pending regarding critical race theory, and I'd be interested in seeing that, that source. So please forward me that, that source.
Culturally responsible teaching and leading standards.
That, that is not critical race theory, ma'am. That is culturally responsible teaching standards. So if, I...
Okay, enough, enough.
No, I, I would just like, I'd just invite anybody from the audience, if critical race theory, that is, I have heard multiple times tonight that there are laws sitting to be passed, please forward those to me so I can be aware of those because I'm not aware of any, any law that's pending that would force the implementation of anything related to critical race theory for the beginning of this school year. That's all I'm requesting.
Okay, just to quote an old, dead, white guy, what's in a name, but... That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Come on.
Hello, everyone. My name is Reed Hoist. I go to Downers Grove North. I'm a senior and a small business owner. I know it's not the subject of focus for tonight, but I would like to comment on the face mask policies that are in place or will be in place. Without taking sides, it seems that I'm being told by people much older than me and much worse physical condition than me and my peers that I should get a vaccine or wear a mask to protect myself. More than 60% of Illinoisans are already vaccinated. There have been 314 COVID deaths of people ages 0 to 17 in America, most with underlying conditions, source stats up. This doesn't concern me personally. A country, a country that hasn't cared for our health in 300 years is telling us to be protected by a cloth mask. We already go into grocery stores with my masks, so why aren't we going into school without them? Finally, I believe they strip away emotion. I don't know who is who. I don't even care to talk to people anymore, I don't know who is who. I don't even care to talk to people anymore, and my peach fuzz itches. Um. My friends and I, and probably many others, chose to go remote because we didn't want to be told to wear a mask and a, and face shield and follow safety guidelines none of us care about. We want to go to school and be told, and not be told what to do. Uh, stick to teaching, not controlling. As for CRT, I believe I have already been taught about race for 12 years. Every history and English class has a lesson about race in it at some point. In fourth grade, we were taught about slaves being whipped, which is understandably a part of history, which is understandably a part of history that will be taught, but it seems teaching kids about race is pushed too early. I'm not fully educated on everything CRT contains. However, I think we should be taught any history or culture in a positive way, not a negative or victimizing way. I'm opposed to NSES. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. As I spoke before, my name is Chick Briner. I'm a resident of Downers Grove for a long time. I'm opposed to teaching critical race theory or diversity, equity, training, all the same thing. It might have a variety of names, but I'm opposed to it. And I'm going to start with a maxim. You've probably heard it. Two wrongs do not make a right. Did your mom tell you that ever? Moms say it often, and moms are always right. You cannot correct a past injustice with a new injustice. We cannot teach our children that some people, based on the color of their skin, are oppressors, or some are oppressed. This will only divide this generation and create tension. We need to be teaching unity and equality, not equity. Dividing us into groups will end up destroying us. CRT is the new segregation. It's the new Jim Crow. I'll finish with this thought. I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. Let's carry on with Martin Luther King's idea.
Hi, um, my name's Janet Novatney. I've been a resident since 1998. I've got two kids through the school. Now I gotta try to get one more through. And I've never came to one of these meetings before. I do not like to public speak, so I'm going to just get to the, to the chase here. I'm a parent. I should be able to do, um, let my parent decide if I, my child needs a vaccination or doesn't, doesn't need a vaccination, not the school district. If this is a medical choice of freedom, I don't believe the schools have a right to tell us what we can and can't do. Um, I don't believe that our kids should be, um, having to wear masks all day. It's, there's so many results of why they should not be wearing masks. Again, um, it's, it's a guidance of the ISBE. I'm not for the CRT or whatever the heck they keep talking about, and I'm Generation X. I was just taught to love one another. We didn't care about race and all this other crap. So I don't understand why this is an issue like now. I don't think my kids personally have, just care about that kind of stuff, and I know they don't. I know I'm running over, I'm running on. Anyway, so I just want to let you guys know, I'm just a parent who is like really concerned about what's going on and whether I'm going to keep her in school to finish her three years or decide, based on what you guys are going to decide for her fate, or if I'm going to have to pull her out, because there's no way in hell I'm going to put her in through all the stuff that is being suggested right now. Thank you.
Sir, I think there was somebody else coming up for, before you. There was somebody behind the screen that was coming up a moment ago. And then you'll be next. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kristi. I'm from Downers Grove. I've lived here over 25 years. And, um, school performance in Illinois is based partly on absenteeism and surveys that ask students personal questions about drugs, alcohol, sex, family political affiliation, religion, and family income, rather than questions on merit and academic achievement. Why is the state requiring kids to answer these questions? These children belong to their parents. Your kids belong to you, not to the government. Your job is to provide a quality education to the kids in Downers Grove. Also, there's theories going around that require teachers to teach our children that America's bad and divisively categorize children to make them feel guilty or privileged, oppressed or entitled, based solely on the color of their skin. Are you good with this? Are you good with this? Is it okay with you? If not, help us stop it. Opt out. Thank you.
Sir, you were next. The gentleman in the, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time. My name's Ed Briner. I've been a resident of Downers Grove since 1952. Gone through the entire educational system here and so have our children. A little history, uh, critical race theory began as critical theory, a school philosophy in Frankfurt, Germany in the 20s and 30s. The University of Frankfurt Institute of Social Research, one of the first Western Marxist schools. The school scholars fled Germany to Columbia University in New York City. They were careful to erase Marxism from their research so as not to attack, attract attention in America. CRT is an activist ideology. From the start, it was an attack on Western institutions and norms in order to tear them down. In the 70s and 80s, CRT expanded on the theory that America is systemically oppressive and racist. When followed to its conclusion, CRT is destructive. It rejects the fundamental ideas of our Constitution and our republic. Applying CRT philosophy violates many American civil rights law, treating people differently according to their race. CRT therefore should not be in American schoolrooms. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Cynthia Hopkins. I'm a resident of Downers Grove Township. I may be out of the school district, but I believe every child's education matters. The latest push of critical race theory and the comprehensive sex ed curriculum, unfortunately, solidified the future of our public schools. Under Illinois Democratic extremist vision, it becomes a political indoctrination camp that favors a divisive, left-wing ideology. I speak up today because the public needs to understand the danger of these policies. Coming from China 20 years ago, I can attest how policies like this can destroy many generations and eventually a nation. See, the most common, the most important common denominator among all the extreme left-wing agendas is division. Divide Americans by skin color, by country of ancestry, by gender, and that list just goes on and on. For those who don't know, China's public policy aims to produce chronical hatred via division. It is exactly why the authoritarian, authoritarian government presents no hope of democracy after four decades of reform. So when the citizens are busy with fighting over the differences and canceling over deferred views, only the government wins. America has sadly entered that state. At least, we don't have to conspire. Let the kids be kids. They're all the same. The modern-day virtual segregation through critical race theory has no place in our classroom. On the sex ed end, while we are debating whether our children need to know there are zillion positions of sexual intercourse, our rivalry, the Chinese government mandates teaching of a real math, the real math and science, and life lessons of teamwork and disciplines in a system of academic meritocracy. So imagine the generations of Americans 20 years from now. Can they still compete, can, can, can they still compete globally? Can they defend our country with valor and strength? Will America still be the most powerful nation that leads with freedom and liberty? And most important question to you all, which rising power will benefit the most from a broken America? Frankly, like many Asian conservatives, it is very intimidating to speak, to speak up in public for my value. Ironically, I never feared because of my gender or my race, or I am so to speak a victim of white supremacy.
I'm sorry, you're out of time.
Intimidation came from the very group of people who are putting my kids to be tolerant
We're going to ask you to please, please stop and we will.
Even more ironically, the same left-wing extremists are crafting my kids.
Okay, I'm going to end the public comments, and we're going to move on.
Ma'am, we have ended.
I am ending. I, I told you all, we're going to end the reception of visitors. We are anxious to hear what you have to say. You can submit your thoughts in writing. Moving on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent. Dr. Thiele, the end of the year report.
All right, we, yes, we do.
Ma'am.
Ma'am, we have closed the reception.
We have closed the reception of visitors. Dr. Thiele, the end of the year report.
Yeah, uh, the Board of Education has been provided the end of the year report. Over the last month, we've gone back and forth with drafts. This evening, it is posted, uh, in the public record for public review. It'll go up on the website as our official administrative review of this year's work. Are there any questions from board members on, on the year-end report? Nope. Also, at this time of the year, along with the year-end report, we bring the board the draft of the 2021, 22 district goals. There's also, uh, since this serves as the direction for the administration for the next year, uh, it's also the public's opportunity to review those, uh, for the next month, and then I'll ask the board to approve those next month. Uh, board members that have questions, comments, suggestions about those as they are in draft form right now, please reach out to me with those, and we can discuss those with you.
Do you have an end date for the public if they want to respond, that you'd like to see them by?
Um, we meet on the 19th, so I would need some time in advance of that. Uh, that's a great question, Dr. Cupka. Probably, uh, July 12th would be the.
So could we maybe put that on the?
It'd be one week before.
Could we put that on the website to say, please comment by? Thank you. Any other?
All right, uh, the next, oh, I'm sorry, was there any other questions on District 1? All right, um. The return to in-person plan, uh, Gina's going to help me present on this one.
Mr. Thiele, could you please explain this to give comments over?
Yes, the, Dr. Cupka ended the reception of visitors, yes.
Of course she did, because you don't want to hear it.
No, ma'am, we gave everybody three minutes, and after the first episode of, when I recessed the board, because people were not willing to continue out the protocol, I explained that if we did not follow protocol, I would end the reception of visitors, so I did. Now we're moving on to the business meeting.
Comments can be emailed to me or to the board directly. The board president is allowed the right to change the rules of reception visitors as she deems fit under board policy. Continuing with the return to in-person plan.
I believe it's in my purview to do so. And if we're willing, and, and, and let me just be clear, for any moving, any meetings going forward, people are given three minutes to speak, up to 30 minutes on any subject, the total speaking, this total amount of time left to speak. If people are not going to follow the protocols of the board, we're not going to sit here and listen to people for hours and hours who are just going on and not being respective of our time and the people and the, and the other people in the community's time. So we are in the business, we are in the business meeting, and we are going to continue. Dr. Thiele.
Continuing with the.
This is an angry public, obviously, with everything going on in this district. At some point, you guys are going to have to drop.
This is not a debate with the, this is not a debate with the public. We are going on with the business meeting. Now, you can remain and listen to the business meeting and say, and submit your thoughts in writing prior to the next meeting or attend the next meeting and stay with the three-minute time limit. Or you can continue to disrupt this meeting, and we will move to close, because we have plenty of business enclosed.
You work for us.
I think we have three more speakers, but they need to have their time.
Dr. Dr. Thiele, continue, please.
So the return to in-person plan for fall 2021, uh, we don't have a lot of details yet from the Illinois State Board of Education, which is very frustrating to us as, as administrators at this point. However, we continue, because we have a lack of guidance from the state, we continue to plan as though we are going to return to pre-pandemic as much as possible. So we are planning as though we're returning without quarantining, contact tracing, masks, any of those things, like we're going back to before COVID, as all of our students, uh, have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, uh, to this point, or have chosen not to, uh, but families have made their choices to this point. Uh, ISBE has issued a resolution for a return to in-person learning, encouraging that all districts return to in-person learning. However, have provided no guidance as to how that is to occur yet, which is the core of our frustration as administrators. Um, we are, as I said, we're planning as though no restriction, uh, restrictions exist. However, preliminary, there's preliminary talk, and in the meetings and webinars we have with ISBE, they keep, uh, mentioning or indicating that, uh, there could be differences, uh, between vaccinated and unvaccinated students. So, you know, we're waiting to find out if that will truly be the fact when things occur or not. However, you know, this is really difficult to hold this meeting. I, I'm going to recommend that, that either the audience participate by watching this meeting, or we again move to recess, and we'll ask for security to clear the room.
Do we need to have security? Can, can people listen to the meeting without interrupting?
A board meeting is a meeting in public, not a meeting with the public. If you'd like to reach out, my email has been, been posted. You can arrange to meet with me.
Okay, we are listening to you, but we have protocols in. We are listening to you, and let me just interrupt you for a moment and say, while you do represent an important segment of our community, you do not represent our entire community. We would love to hear what you have to say, but you have to stay within the protocols. We're trying to, ma'am. We're trying to give each of you three minutes. So, no, okay. We are, I'm asking for a motion to go into closed session.
No.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
Second.
The reasons for closed session.
Session are? I'm getting there.
The appointment, employment, I'm sorry.
Compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or volunteer of the district or against legal counsel for the district and, to determine its validity. And litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal. Or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
So I moved. I need a second.
Second.
Terry, second.
Thank you very much. Mike Dab report.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Is Mr. Espinoza with us still?
Mr. Espinoza?
Thank you. Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. We are in closed session. Is everybody, yeah, okay. We are back. Sorry about the disruption. Um, Dr. Thiele, did you want to continue with the?
Yes.
I think we were on the district goals or the 99, oh, no, the 99 return to person.
Yeah, we're going to restart the District 99 return to in-person plan. Because I'm not sure how much the board was able to hear. Right. What I was saying before. So, um, the goal of our plan for the fall is to return to as close to pre-pandemic as possible. So if we were making the rules based on the fact that we have multiple vaccination clinics going on, families have had the opportunity to either vaccinate their children or have chosen not to, and accept what risks come either way with either option, that our recommendation to the board would be to return to school as normal. No masks. If you're sick, stay home, just as we always ask everybody to do. Um, and that it would look as close to pre-pandemic as possible. However, uh, we don't have all the control or say over that, and we don't know what that guidance will, when it will come from the state, if there'll be limitations on us executing that plan, um, and when we will hear those things. So we know that ISBE passed a resolution about a month ago saying that they are encouraging us to return to in-person learning. That's what we're planning for. However, they didn't release any of the changes and guidelines that would allow for that to happen. So, you know, we're kind of in this nebulous zone right now of, yeah, you want us to return to pre-pandemic, but you still have rules in place that say we can't. This sounds so familiar. Yes. So we're, we're kind of stuck right now. So, uh, no guidelines have yet been released on that. We are planning as though no restrictions will exist. So every time a question comes up with me and the administrative team about what are we going to do, the first thing we all respond is, well, what did we do before the pandemic, right? And then we kind of put those actions in place and start working towards that. However, you know, even though we're saying that, we've been told that return to business as usual, that's the goal, we still keep getting memos or guidance and webinars from the state that keep referencing, well, there'll, there's these differences between people that are vaccinated and unvaccinated. And some of those are in effect for now, for like summer sports or those kinds. We don't know if those things still continue or will fall away or those kinds of things. So, um, you know, those aren't the decisions that we are making. Those are the decisions that ISBE is making. I, I just want the public to understand and the board to understand that there might be guidance that comes from IDPH, Illinois Department of Public Health, or Illinois State Board of Education, or DuPage County Health Department, all that have some differing authority over us that might put different restrictions, conditions, things like quarantine or social distancing or masks or any of those things based on whether somebody is vaccinated or unvaccinated. We are not pushing for that kind of guidance, right? That is very difficult to administer, maintain, you know, enforce, do any of those kinds of things around it. However, for families that do want to get their children vaccinated, we had the vaccination clinic in May, and then the second dose was last week. We're going to run another one, uh, in the middle of July, and they'll come back, uh, before school starts for their second dose, and we'll be fully vaccinated by the time school starts. And then we're going to run another one in August so that, you know, if anybody by that time has decided to change their mind, uh, they could come back. For our vaccination clinics, we're using different pharmacies because we know some people are more comfortable with other pharmacies. So the first one is Julosco, the next one is Coto Care, the one after that is Walgreens. So, you know, we're, we're just trying to provide options to our families. Nobody's saying that anybody has to do anything with vaccinations, but we're just, we're trying to meet the needs of our students and their families.
What are, what are we looking at in percentage-wise? I'm sorry.
I have no idea. We, we've, we had parents reach out to us that wanted us to be in possession of vaccination records, just in case rules come, and also the fact that at the end of the school year, if you were vaccinated, you had different quarantine and close contact rules. So some parents chose to send that in, others didn't, you know, there's no mandate or requirement that we, as of this time, that we record any of those vaccination records.
So, OSCO, Total Care, and Walgreens will not tell you your student has been vaccinated?
Or, we don't have any of those records.
Hinsdale students have been vaccinated, or?
Correct.
Okay.
We're just providing the location for those pharmacies to come in and administer the vaccines, just to make it easier on families, you know, it's close, they don't have to schedule an appointment, you know, or they could schedule an appointment at their convenience, you know, it's just about providing a service to our community.
Terry, are you asking, so, the only way we know if a student has been vaccinated is if that student parent let us know.
Correct.
That's, I think that's kind of what you're doing.
Yeah, I, I was just kind of also curious as to the percentage of students that were vaccinated.
That's one of the things that we're, we have been asking the state, is if they can tell us that, because there are record, you know.
There's HIPAA laws.
State record, yeah. But even in aggregate, could they tell us, you know, X percentage of your students have been vaccinated? We don't know if we can.
Do we know, the students that have, the students and parents who have informed us, do we have, do we have some sense for that?
I, I haven't asked for any data on that at this point, as to the numbers or anything like that.
Can you get it?
Is that some, would we want to know that at some point? I, I think, I think we would.
At this point, no, because I don't know if there's really any difference coming, like if there's no difference between vaccinated and unvaccinated, it doesn't matter when the rules come.
I see.
You know, so until I get, until I get a reason to go asking for that kind of information, it just, it's, you know, it will definitely change over time, it would just kind of be a waste of staff resources at this time.
Jenny, you were trying to interject.
I just was wondering in the, kind of the preliminary indications, are they only looking at vaccinated and unvaccinated students, or are they looking at students who have had, who have confirmed? Because, I mean, there is.
Oh, that have had COVID, yeah, yeah, so.
I mean, there's.
At the end of the school year, yeah, it was for quarantine rules, if you had tested positive in the last 90 days, it was the same as being vaccinated. But, like I said, all, this is, I'm just hearing and looking in the tea leaves that, you know, the information that we call, we continue to get right now in the summer, continues to separate rules for those vaccinated versus unvaccinated, for summer camps and athletic activities and those kinds of things, it continues to have different rules for each of those groups. So, whether it'll still be that way in the fall, I don't know, but I think the public should know, and the board should know, that that's what we're seeing currently.
And then, you know, some, so, so for the question that was raised tonight about being divisive, and we're going to treat students differently, that's really not true, we're just, may need to know in the event that we have some close contact notifications. In terms of planning for next year, in the event that we do have students who cannot come in, because they are close contacts, what will, what will, what will happen to those students? Will they be sent home with a book for two weeks?
Yeah, we have students that are out for extended periods of time.
All the time.
All the time, and we work through that with each individual student, depending on the courses, the teachers, the classes, and meet the needs of the students when they're out, whether that be for an illness like chicken pox, or it be for mental health and hospitalizations, whether, you know, any number of reasons why a student could miss an extended period of time, it's our responsibility to meet that student's needs while they're out, and that's what we'll continue to do.
So I'm hearing that consistent with your, you know, our plan for returning as normal.
Correct.
Because this is, and we're, we're thinking of COVID as just, you know, it's one of those diseases, one of those sicknesses that students could get at any time, and you need to be out for a period of time.
And when Gina gets up, she'll talk a, a little bit here about some of the interventions that we have in place, but the board knows that we've added social emotional support interventions and staff over the last five years.
Yep.
Because we've had seen increases in the amount of students being out for extended period of time, especially due to things like anxiety, depression, those kinds of things. So, this is, we have programs and protocols for serving students when they're out of school.
So the, the shift, though, is to, it's going to be more on an individual student basis versus we're offering.
Like a holistic, comprehensive.
A remote option, so to speak, for, for a subset that chooses not to be.
Correct.
So it's just, it's just like one.
Because last year, the state rules required us to offer that remote option to all students, you know, where next year, it does not look like that will be a requirement. And if the directive right now is get back to as close to normal as possible, that's what the state has told us to do, we didn't have a fully remote school before the pandemic arrived. That wasn't something we were working towards, nor, you know, our experiences with blended learning definitely demonstrated that you needed regular in-person check-ins with students for it to be comprehensively effective, that if kids didn't have check-ins with adults, it, it fell behind, you know, so that's why we have blended models the way we have them now and not fully remote school.
Well, I, I just want to say that, you know, a lot of what we heard tonight, I just heard a lot of fear, you know, and, and, you know, I think we heard it from the one student too, concerned about coming into school this coming year, and will I have to wear a mask or not, and what'll happen to me, will I need to quarantine or not, everyone wants answers, and we've been dealing with this for the last year, everybody wants to be able to predict what's going to happen in the future, and, you know, if anything, we've learned this last year, you just can't. And we need to be aware of the thing, the, the fact that things can change, so there may be guidance coming, there may not be guidance coming, I mean, the three-foot rule may be the quarantining, may not, I, I mean, we, we don't, we really don't know, but we've been instructed to proceed as if we're going back to normal, and that's the way we're building our plan. And, you know, God forbid that we should get to the few days before school and have to, you know, adjust our plan again, but that's the world we've been living in, and it, you know, it's only June, just a few months ago, we were still, still living in a pretty crazy world, so, yeah, yeah, well, clearly as demonstrated this evening, I think.
Did you want to say something, Joanna, or were you just?
No.
So, just a few more variables to put on the, the board's radar, so, some major variables in Illinois, Chicago Public Schools are still in session, right?
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Currently, right now. So, one of the, the beliefs that many of us have as leaders is that we need that school year to end for this giant school district in the state. So that there isn't, you know, confusion between next year's rules and this year's rules with Chicago Public Schools. So that, that kind of makes sense. Also, the Center for Disease Control, CDC, has said that this summer, they will be releasing updated school guidance. It's very possible that IDPH is waiting for the CDC to release their updated guidance before they release theirs. So those are two factors that are out there. However, we as superintendents believe that if you came out with a directive to open schools as closely as possible to the past, you probably have some things worked out. So, we would like to get as much information and direction about the reopening of the school as soon as possible that they have, from the, from the state level. We advocated from the Illinois High School District Association at the Illinois State Board of Education meeting last Wednesday, we had representatives there, speaking on my behalf and the district's behalf in high schools all over the state, about, you know, it takes time to plan these things, and our communities want to know what's going on, and people need to make decisions about what next year offers, please provide us information immediately. In response to that, we had a webinar today with the Illinois State Board of Education that pretty much told us what we already knew to this point, there was no new information provided. So after that, we as superintendents across the state at all levels are preparing a letter to Illinois State Board of Education that spells out, here are the key points of things that we really need to know before we bring kids back, so we can plan for protocols, and do we need additional furniture, and do we need supplies and signage, and all of the things that you would imagine we would need to plan for next year. That letter is being signed by superintendents across the state over the next couple of days, and in its final form will be sent to the Illinois State Board of Education on Thursday. If we don't hear anything, you know, if we get guidance before that, then that would cause us to reevaluate that. Once we send that, that will be a public document, we will share it with the public, we will encourage people to reach out to their legislators and state government and ISBE, and advocate on our behalf, to try to get us the information that we need to plan to return. So right now, our plan that we are required to present to the public is this, this is as, based on what we know today, we plan on returning as closely to pre-pandemic as possible, with the caveat that as the rules change, our plan will have to change, and that we'll just keep, keep the board and the public informed as those things happen. What the public can do right now is try to encourage the state to provide us the information we need to make those plans with fidelity for when we return. So, questions on where we're at right now?
Is that something we could share with the public?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Ask them to?
Yep, please.
Yeah, I mean, they have to watch the meeting, but maybe there's an email address or something?
Yeah, once the, once we finalize that, that letter, I will be sharing that as, like, this is what I sent, if you would like to take any of this and contact your legislators, please do so.
Do you know when Chicago Public Schools are done?
I don't know the date off the top of my head.
It's soon, because they just.
I think it's like the end of June.
Yeah, I think it's before the 4th of July.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, so.
But this will all be on the website, your letter?
Yeah, we'll post it, yeah, absolutely, we'll share it up.
But I would encourage also the public to remember that a lot of.
Terry, you know what?
Got to get close to the mic.
I'm sorry, I, I forget. I would encourage the public to remember, not everything that they read on the internet is true. And that if they would like what is truly happening in District 99, to please read our website and to communicate with Dr. Thiele about that. And that, don't read what someone says as gospel.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to invite Gina up right now, she's going to talk through how this also plays into the things that she's managing moving forward, and then we have a link for, based on what Gina and I are sharing this evening, for the public to provide feedback on what we know to this point.
We learned tonight, too, that she's on vacation this week.
She is on vacation and came back to spend the evening with you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to get that on the public record, the dedication on the part of some of our staff.
So as Hank said, we are presenting as we know today. We are required to post our plan, and that's part of Essar ARP, which is the third of the Emergency Elementary Secondary Emergency Relief Grants, and we are required to post it on our website, which we will do after, after this meeting. So, this is the plan as of today, as Dr. Thiele said, we do not have the guidance to fill out every aspect of the plan. So, we're planning, and Dr. Thiele pretty much already said this, we are planning to return to pre-COVID schedule, eight-period day, lunch built into the school day, we are anticipating half-periods, at least to start, although that will be dependent on what the guidelines are, so could be half-periods for part of the year, could go to full periods, we just have to kind of wait and see what that looks like, we're not planning for a fully remote option, and we will continue with the cleaning and all that is required with air circulation, and in terms of masks and quarantines and social distancing, we are waiting on the guidance, so that will be based on what the requirements are. These interventions, I believe, we actually already spoke about when I talked about the consolidated district plan at the May workshop, I believe it was, but just a reminder, and Dr. Thiele did mention the first one there, that we are adding additional personnel in our counseling and student support services, we're increasing our EL and bilingual offerings at both high schools, we added an interventionist this year to work with students who are at risk of failing, students that are struggling, we'll be adding additional interventionists at South High, and an additional interventionist at North High as well. We are continuing with paper and are very pleased with our results thus far. We expanded STRIVE, which is a touring program we've had in the district for, I believe, the last eight to 10 years, it could even be longer than that, we expanded it this year to include aspects of like executive functioning, to help students to really learn to work remotely, or hybrid, or in person, we plan to continue to expand that and hopefully fully implement our PATH program, we're really excited to be able to do that. So as Dr. Thiele said before, we will be posting the plan, and there is a Google form, so people can go in and put in comments, we're required to post it for 30 days, we'll post it for a little over that, so everyone has an opportunity, so anyone who has, you know, concerns about the plan, they can share information about the plan, and then we'll be reviewing that information.
Any questions?
Questions for Gina, right?
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
I'm still up.
I have a quick question before. Will that include semester exams?
So that is certainly something we've been talking about, and, and certainly, teachers sometimes do give some sort of assessments, but really the question is more about final exam schedules.
Exactly.
Which is what the issue has been and that we've been working through.
So, we have a meeting administratively right af, in that first week of July, where we'll be discussing that, and then we'll bring a recommendation to the board in July around the final exam schedule. Do we carve out that schedule? Teachers will always give exams, depending on how their course team plans, but whether or not we want to indicate that it's like expected.
Right.
Through a bell schedule is what will come with the recommendation in July.
Look forward to that.
Thank you. So the next topic is the consolidated district plan. I spoke about the consolidated district plan last month and shared information about the plan, this is a plan we've had to do for the last couple of years, we annually must submit it to Illinois State Board of Education, and I talked about a lot of the interventions that have been in place, most of them for a number of years. So tonight, I'm just going to focus on some that are newer or brand new, just to share some information. So, we did add one dual-credit course this year, we were actually able to make it so students could earn dual credit this year, which is not typical, usually when it's approved, it's for the following year, but we were able to get it in place for this year, and that's for interior design. We do have a couple of other courses we're working on with COD, but we are not at the point of having those approved quite yet. We also have a new dual enrollment opportunity for students, as the board already knows, we currently have an arrangement with Benedictine where we offer astronomy as a dual enrollment course, and we have an agreement with Elmhurst University, formerly Elmhurst College, for our Calc III students. We now have added Eastern Illinois University, we in fact have three students right now, one of which I spoke with earlier today, who are taking a whole language class, so they're earning credit for whole language through Eastern Illinois University, through a, really an immersion program, so that's, that's really exciting. We also, this year.
I'm going to pause Gina and just point out that that is a board goal, that Gina has done a very fine job of working us towards over the last several years.
Yeah, that's awesome. I, I do have a question.
Cheryl, I'm sorry.
Need, need to get you close to the mic.
Can we talk about dual credit? And I think I've asked this before, that is a difference in, in AP classes, it's just a credit that, a class that we have aligned with the university to, to offer, is that correct?
Yes, but if I can kind of explain the difference between AP, dual-credit, and dual enrollment, I think that might help.
That will help me.
Okay, AP classes, we have 27, if I remember correctly, don't quote me on that, I think that's right, though, I think we have 27. Approximately 27.
I can live with that.
They have the rigor of college courses, we have to follow curriculum, basically guideline standards set by the college board, and students take an exam, and based on.
How they score.
How they score, how they do on that exam, they may, or may not, earn credit depending on the school that they go to. Okay, now, there are some exceptions if you're going to public in, in Illinois, but. Now, there's some exceptions if you're going to public in, in Illinois, but it's possible that they could earn credit.
And you have to take the test.
You have to take the test, not just take the class. And it's not dependent on your grade in the class or how well you performed in the class. It's based on the exam.
Your score on the exam.
On the exam. Okay? So that's AP. Dual credit is a course that is aligned to whatever institution is awarding credit. So in most cases, it's going to be College of DuPage. But that's a course that our teacher teaches. They must meet the criteria to actually be adjunct at that school. So our teachers who teach dual credit in District 99 meet the requirements to be an adjunct professor to teach the course. Dual credit courses, they earn the college credit, so COD credit, but they also earn District 99 credit because it's taught by our teachers. Okay? Now there's dual enrollment courses as well.
Hold on, Gina. Important piece with that is the grade you earn is what shows up on your COD transcript as well, is your, so if you earn that credit, you have that credit already at a college that then is transferable anywhere.
Really? That's the part I was trying to get. So it's not just Eastern Illinois University, you can go?
Well, as long as-
And as long as it's accepted.
As long as the university will accept it.
Sure.
Each university has its own criteria for accepting.
And, and sometimes they'll accept it like as an elective.
That's, no one-
So it could be an education course or an astronomy course. They might accept it as an elective, not necessarily a science or an education course. Dual enrollment's just a little bit different in that the student takes the course, but it is taught by the university professor. It's not taught by District 99. They earn college credit, not high school credit.
Yeah, there's no high-
But it is an opportunity, it's like an early college opportunity to earn college credit while in high school. Dual credit and dual enrollment, they're actually starting their college transcript.
So, so you, I, I'm sorry, just to clarify, if you don't mind me interrupting. So if you do have dual enrollment, you could earn college credit but not earn-
That's correct.
So you could come up short on your hours to graduate from 99?
That would rarely, yes, theoretically could happen.
But it probably wouldn't happen. Yeah, it wouldn't happen.
I don't know of a single instance where that has happened.
And most of the time, dual enrollment's done outside of the school day.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So for example, our astronomy course is an online course. The Eastern Illinois Whole Child Education Course is in the summer. And Calculus III is an online course with some synchronous instruction that sort of occurs during the school day but is taught by an Elmhurst University professor.
Anybody in that course has already met their math requirement to graduate.
Far beyond. Far beyond. That's like sophomore, sophomore college.
I just wanted to say, I, I like this track, and this has been important to me because if you're not an AP student, I wanted to see other options for those students who are willing to do the work and, and, you know, have a goal of college where they can have other options. So I like this, and I, and I know some of the students that my daughter goes to school with at her university has talked about, you know, they had all these dual enrollment or dual-class opportunities, so.
Yeah, we've been a little behind, this, Illinois has been a little behind, I think.
We have been.
And, and, and also I wanted to point out that, you know, the, getting our teachers that accreditation with, with the, with the college was huge. And actually, there, it, this was something we worked hard on for several years, and there was a lot of resistance with COD, as I recall, that we needed to work through. But finally, you know, that, so this is a huge accomplishment.
We got that legislation passed.
Yeah.
And since then, you know, and COD also got a new president and has been very open in comparison to the past.
Terrific, and then I just anecdotally have to share, I mean, this is, I don't know that people realize, this is just how huge this is.
It is.
I have a daughter who was able to graduate in three years because of her AP credits plus her, her Calc III, North Central College at the time. So we had to get her transcript sent. And, and, and incidentally, too, that was the first time that at her college that they had, that the professors that she was talking to, that they ever recalled admitting, having a student come in that had already had Calc III, which was really, I think, something, you know, a feather in our cap. And, and then I have another daughter who just did the astronomy class, and she, so we're having her transcript sent. And, and, and so it's, it's, I mean, so from my standpoint, my, my child went to school for three years instead of four. I mean, that saved us a lot of money, you know? And, and our students, the, the girls enjoyed it. It's, it's great to get a little taste of, of what college classes are like. This is tremendous.
And finances is still a barrier to entry for a lot of folks, you know, when it comes to going to, going to college, so.
Can you speak a little bit as to how this, these are presented to students or how they would find out about it?
So it really depends on the course. So if we're talking about AP and dual credit, that would go through, when they're signing up for any, registering for any courses, right? When they're talking to their counselors, they're talking to their teachers, teachers are making recommendations. For example, with Calculus III, most of the time, the students that are going into Calculus III as juniors took Calculus BC. Okay. So that would be the next logical step.
Logical step.
There could be some exceptions, but again, that, that's the way it is. You know, our counselors know a lot about the courses, the dual-credit courses, AP courses, the teachers do, so those happen in that way. With dual enrollment, it is a little bit different. And Dr. Thiele's right, there are students who take dual enrollment classes that we wouldn't even necessarily know about. For example, a student could take a college course between junior and senior year in the summer at COD and earn college credit. They do not need to, they might inform us, but they don't necessarily have to inform us, right? There's nothing that we, you know, as the high school, have to do for them to, to be able to do this. So we don't always know. In terms of the new dual-credit opportunity, or dual enrollment, excuse me, opportunity we've had with Eastern, I sent out emails to all students who were eligible because there were certain criteria set by Eastern Illinois University. I held a parent night, and, and parent and student night, and I had several families attend. It was on Zoom. And then sent the email back out again and said, maybe you couldn't attend the night, but if you're still interested, let me know. They filled out applications. I held another parent night, and we worked all that out, and that's how we got to where we're at today.
Is it typically seniors?
And same with astronomers. They're going to be seniors next year.
Usually, okay, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't happen generally in the younger grades as much?
We have had juniors in our astronomy class through Benedictine.
But there's, yeah, it's usually upperclass.
Would they be approached by the, by their math teacher, or how would they find, to your point, why would they find out?
So the astronomy courses, every one of them is very different. So with the astronomy course is, you know, I work with Benedictine, and this really all started about four or five years ago when I cold-called Benedictine and said, we'd really like to form a partnership, and that's how we got where we're at. We also have a pathway to credit-bearing courses, which was really what the goal of that was. But then the astronomy, and we actually had a literature course at one time as well through Benedictine, came to fruition. And so I work with them and what the criteria is. I send out mass emails. People respond. I send out more emails, and then I meet people, and they say, you're the lady who sends all those emails. But then we get kids, and we had the most, this, this spring, we had more astronomy students than we ever had. I think in part because of remote learning, because it's an online course and students knew they could do it now, at least the students that signed up, because I asked some of them, you know, why are, we have so many students, why? Because there was two meetings that I asked the students to attend, and the professor, who we've worked closely with the last four or five years also, you know, met with the students. But we had over 20 students. And in the past, I'd have maybe seven, nine, it varied.
This is awesome.
So, long answer to probably, I apologize.
And there's a, there's a cost, though, for the class.
There, okay, so there's a cost for Benedictine. However, what is nice about Benedictine, and this, I feel like this is a commercial, but what is nice about Benedictine? If, that if the student is receiving free lunch, the tuition is waived. If the student is receiving reduced lunch, they receive a reduced rate. The regular rate, if I remember correctly, is $180 for three credit hours, which, if you've ever sent.
It's cheap.
Still a great reason.
Wow.
That's a bargain.
So I just, I, I wanted that to-
Yeah, that is a bargain.
Wow.
Calculus III is a, there is a small fee as well. I fund Calculus III two ways. One through, some of that is through parents paying, but the other part of it is through Title IV grant, which pays part of that to bring it down for our families.
Wow, so it's not a $1,050 credit hour. Not familiar with that.
And the Eastern Illinois University, I was able to sponsor all three students. It was $1,315 per student. One we were able to do through the Education Pathway Grant, the other two I was able to fund through Title IV.
Wow, that's awesome.
That is.
Awesome work.
So if Gina's going to come in on a vacation day, she might go get the credit she deserves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can-
Now you can keep, sorry for-
Okay. So, so this summer, we are also running an Alex enrichment program. Alex is a computer program, and they're actual courses that we had students in their District 99 math courses. We're also working on the Alex courseware with their teachers in class and outside of class. Since we, the, it's a one-year subscription, it's open over the summer. So to encourage students, we again sent out emails and telling students, you know, you have this opportunity, letting parents know for those students in the classes, and we're talking almost 3,000 students, that this is available over the summer and that they can go in over the summer. And I have a math teacher/department chair who goes one hour a week online, so if students have any questions, they can go into his Zoom meeting, and he does help them if the questions are obviously about the Alex courseware. So that's a program we did over the summer. We are also, we just finished this week, in fact, our Summer World Language Support for German. We have a French enrichment program as well. This is aimed for students who feel that they need a little more to be prepared for the next level, because world language builds. You need to be proficient at one level to go on to the next. So it's not just for students who maybe were failing or even getting a D. We, I know for sure we had a student who inquired about it that had a C, just wanted that little bit of extra practice. We were able to get our portable transition math class, which is our preparation for quant lit class, approved this year. So we have students who are matriculating to any community college in the state of Illinois, automatically going into college-bearing math courses, which is huge. This is something that we've been working on in District 99 and DuPage County for the last 12 years that I'm aware of. But through the Power Act and other, and through the work of our superintendents and Dr. Caputo as well at COD, we were able to see this come to fruition.
Awesome.
Another board goal.
Yes.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And last but not least, the Illinois State Board of Education started a pathway endorsement program this year. And based on certain criteria, students can earn a pathway endorsement. We had to apply and be approved. We did apply, and literally the week, I think it was the week of graduation, we were approved, and the language that needed to go on the student's transcript was finally approved. So we were able to get that. It was, I believe, literally the week of graduation. If I remember correctly, we had 19 students who did earn that pathway endorsement. That pathway endorsement is just to show schools that students met the requirement, part of which is six hours of dual credit, just since we talked about dual credit, I thought I mentioned that. There are many more parts of the consolidated district plan. I created a document that is on Board Docs that you can look over. Certainly will answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Wow. Thanks, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
Yeah, that was impressive.
And congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Request for Qualifications Strategic Plan. We've been talking for several years about doing a strategic plan, but waiting until our facilities were completed, as that was the last major part of the last strategic plan. And we'll so drastically change the environment in which students are learning in that we felt, you know, let's get people into this new space before we start talking about what's next. So now it's time, people are going to come back, they're going to, kids are going to come back, be in this new space. Time to start working with the community to determine what are the next steps for our district. So over the course of the next year, we will hire a third-party consultant, because there's a lot of community outreach and data that needs to be gathered and processed. And we also want it to be gathered and processed in an unbiased format. You know, we don't want people thinking that the administration is slanting things in a certain way. So this is why districts go out and find a third-party consultant. Jill and the communications team, along with other administrators, including me, have worked to put together this request for qualifications that's in the board packet tonight, and we're asking for the board to approve that later on under action items. And then we'll issue it and start gathering people that we'll vet, and ultimately come to the board with a recommendation of a third party to work with.
So with these, you, you put out RFP for something like this, too? Okay.
And we have names of companies that we know other schools have used that we can at least make them aware that it's out there. Yeah.
Is there an expectation that we're going to model this somewhat on, on how we built our MFP plan, where we engaged different groups, identified people? Are we going to be able to use some of that, that experience in this process?
Yeah, I think you can see that experience in the way that Jill has written the request for qualifications, right, that we learned from that experience. And then, yes, we will definitely leverage what we did there in how we, we do this. But, you know, obviously in cooperation with that third party.
And if I remember correctly, the last time the document was shared was from 2011. We've done this before, and it was in 2011.
Correct, 2011 was the last time. Typically, school boards will do this about every five years, but there was such a lofty goal in there in the master facility plan that we've, we've waited. This one's a 10-year cycle, and then hopefully we'll get back to these five-year cycles. Food service program agreement, the board, I've sent you some information about this over the last month. We're recommending that we opt out of the USDA meal program and go into a one-year pilot of a more flexible program. Mark and Dre are both here, who have done a lot of the work on this. We've provided the background to the board, but ultimately, it'll provide a lot more flexibility to our students. Trade-off is that we could incur as, as high of $300,000 loss in federal grant funds as a result of this, when we believe that perhaps maybe students taking advantage of the food service in our new, new commons will offset some of those, those lost revenues and make them up in other ways. So that's the big overarching picture. I'll turn over direct questions to Mark and Dre.
I, I have a question. So I was a little confused about it. So the, today, the USDA is, I think, what I saw, they provide funding for the USDA that provides the food, or certain providers of the food.
They set up the guidelines that we have to follow through the Hungry, or Healthy Hunger Free Child Act. So if you're in the national program, you have to follow those guidelines for nutrition and for the content of the meals.
Okay.
Portion sizes are smaller, and it, and so we're, this is a one-year pilot. We're just trying to see, especially with the new survey and the more space, how the kids react to maybe more robust meals.
Okay.
Something they're more used to, you know? And there's two things we're fighting, though, with this still, it's, they're shortened periods, which is a problem. They don't have a lot of time. But we, we are making a lot of changes where there's going to be some other places other than the main survey area to get a meal. So we're going to be able to get, you know, meals that, and the free and reduced kids will get free meals, and same, same as they have in the past. It'll, but it'll be probably a little bit better meal than they got in the past, because it's going to be a standard meal that any kid could walk up and give, say, give me that lunch, I want the, the program lunch.
So this is just providing us that opportunity to come outside of the guidelines and, and, okay. I was, I, I was a little confused about if they actually tell us what vendors we have to use, but this is just us opting out of the guidelines and trying something different? Okay.
A large number of high schools around us have it, you know, this way already, they're not in the program. So we have some other things to, you know, give us an outline of how to operate it, and Chartwell's has other schools that have, are off the program, too, so.
That was my question, actually, just wondering, those other schools that have tried this, have they seen a reduction in food waste? And have they seen an increase in student participation?
I can't speak to the waste part. I believe it would be because a lot of times we're serving and it goes right in the garbage because it's a piece of fruit or it's, you know, something they don't want. But in terms of the kids going through, using our survey rather than bringing the brown bag in or just picking a few things, we do expect it to go up. I mean, I think, and I think other schools, that's why other schools get, you know, more kids involved in the lunch program.
I can't remember if it was a formal goal of pass boards or not, but we had a lot of discussion years back about what can we do to increase the amount of participation in our lunch programs? And I actually floated this idea many years ago. I think, you know, we're, I, what are we down to now? I mean, in terms of the last normal year we had, number of students that were actually taking it was like 20%, 20, 22, 23? I mean, it was really.
Dre's shaking her head, she runs the program, but I think that's about right, 20 to 23.
Yeah.
So a lot of kids don't.
And that had just been, and that's been a steady sort of downward slide. Despite all the efforts we've had in trying to, you know, fine-tune what we were doing and the kids, so one little off conversation we had, a little sidebar conversation. We still are going to have the shorter lunch periods this coming year.
It, right, that depends. We're planning that because we're going to pre-pandemic. Because if guidelines come out about social distancing for lunch periods, we can make lunch periods work that way. If we don't have restrictions around lunches, then we will look at doing the full period lunch, which then would provide even more access. But it, this is one of those things that's teetering on state guidelines.
Because I think that this is just, I mean, the students are coming back to new facilities. How wonderful that they'll have, they'll also see, hey, the food, you know, right? And then more places to eat and also more options in terms of where to get the food. And to me, just logically, this seems like it's, I mean, I'm hoping we don't incur that $300,000 loss. It's scary and you're obligated to, you know, to say this is the risk. But the potential is there to really mitigate that. And the hope would be in the long term that this becomes really popular and that we have huge student participation, right?
You know, I'm looking at it as, you know, our students, I think, are more sophisticated eaters now than they've ever been.
More than you or I were when we were.
For a lot of things, you know. And this makes me really excited to see that we have some offerings that maybe will appeal to those kids who, you know, want salad bars and soup bars.
Well, you're making a great point though that so, I mean, a lot of kids are on very specific diets too, for whatever reason, right? And there might be a better opportunity here to meet that, right?
Right. And, I mean, this is just really exciting. Now, my only question is, how much is an average meal going to cost? Is it going to be more expensive than what was, what was it, like $3 or?
We have to increase ours because the funding, the funding that we get, we've actually been having meals that cost less than what the funding would get back on it because they've been so cheap. And they've been requiring us to increase the lunch prices for a standard meal for the last few years. So we're thinking it would be somewhere near $450 next year for, if we were in the program and Chartwell's is proposing $5. So it'll be 50 cents more to buy, we think, a much better meal. And just as an aside, we've done such a brand-new, beautiful survey here at North. We're making improvements to the South one as well as we can too to make that, just give a whole new feel and trying to keep them. But this is an exciting thing, you're right.
Can you confirm like how many different purchase points there might be versus what there used to be? Because I know time was always, like, is there going to be three stations where they could pay?
I think it's going to be three, you know, I'm guessing now, three.
At least three.
Can they pay off of a phone app or is it a, is it a card?
I don't think for students we're going to go to phone app. That was not, it was discussed. And actually for teachers though, they would be able to have it, which other schools are saying is very successful. They can even call down for a lunch and have it ready for them. It'd be ready to just pick up and eat or, you know.
That'd be a future enhancement we'd look.
Is it cashless or is?
It's not cashless completely, but it's getting there. A lot of it is, you know, we encourage all the kids to have an account, even free and reduced kids because if they buy à la carte, they do have to pay for à la carte items.
You know, we hit on a, we hit on a point here too that just occurred to me. You're bringing up that the fact that we are being told that we had to increase our lunch costs because we're participating in the program.
We were getting more money than the cost.
So there is the potential as we go forward that the program is doing really well. And it'll be our decision as to whether or not we choose to, you know, subsidize more or less and to what extent. It won't be dictated to us. And so I like that flexibility.
Actually, we'll be going to a system where it's not subsidized at all, but this, because the subsidy really comes from state and fed. So we'll be losing that, but we're not, we're losing the federal subsidies. We're, but we're not really, you know, subsidizing the lunch out of district dollars.
Just to clarify, so this is a one-year pilot?
Right.
And is there any impact on our students who are on free or reduced lunch or are somehow?
No, they're going to get a free.
They're still going to get it?
So they can go wherever?
Right, if they pick up just an à la carte item and walk through, they will have to pay for that. But if they get a standard lunch, which is a requirement now, you have to get a type A meal. If you say, yeah, I want, I want this, they don't call it type A. They call, I just want the regular meal deal or whatever.
Yeah.
And they get that, zero goes on their account.
And they could go to any, like, they can go to the smoothie bar or the cereal bar?
I think we're going to try and inhabit it at all three spots for them so that they're spread out, you know, so they can get to it.
And it should be higher quality food than what they're getting at this point.
Thank you.
My quick question is, are we going to be collecting data that they can use to make the standards for lunches? Because there are standards that we have to meet usually with lunches.
Technically anymore, they'll be able to put together whatever, you know.
Well, yeah, because we've opted out of it. But are they going to use our, what our kids buy and what they want as data?
They're free to do that. And since they're going to own the program, it's in their best interest to get, make as enticing a meal as they can can for those kids for that $5.
You know, and for five.
And you can do a pretty good lunch for $5 when you're at Chartwell's and you buy, you know, millions of dollars worth of food.
Of food at the time. And, you know, you got to remember McDonald's meal is more than $5 now. So, you know, we're going to have a better quality lunch. Not that McDonald's isn't quality food, I'm not saying that because.
But yes, we will have a highly, high-quality lunch.
That's my previous life, I can't deny that. But, but it.
It's affordable, is what you're saying.
Yeah. You know, I mean, I realize $5 sounds like a lot for a school lunch, considering when I went to school, it was like a buck fifty or something like that.
Not anymore. I mean, $5 is really.
But then you could bring it in a stone tablet. So it sounds, so it sounds like everybody's supporting. Do we have any other questions or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't mean to cut you off, I just, I'm on a big agenda. I know this is, I know this is an important point.
Yep.
And I would expect the best, the same from you to me.
All right. Next item is insurance renewals. This comes to the board every year at this time. We do combine with District 58 for some of these renewals as Mark has outlined in his memo. The overall recommendation from Mark is an increase of $821,753, which is 5.7% increase from last year. I'll turn it over to Mark for the details and any questions.
Actually, 821 is the total. It's, the increase is $43,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the total. Thank you, Mark.
The key things here really, there's two key factors. One is workers' compensation. It's the largest premium that we have to pay and the coverage that we need under workers' compensation. And it's been a real rough year for workers' compensation with the pandemic. And so in the past couple of years, we've seen little or no increase in workers' compensation. Now this year, we're seeing a 4.5% income increase in our biggest program. So that just kind of weights everything. And the second thing is that we're increasing our cyber liability. It's, they are targeting schools. Schools have successfully been able to fend some of them off, but it's by using these, the cyber liability coverage. They're experts and they'll set a team up if we get hit. And it's a large, you know, hit. So that's what, we're moving from 1 million to 2 million. That's another $12,000 as part of that total increase of $43,000. So the 5.7 is hard, a number for us to eat, but we didn't get an increase in workers' comp last year. So really, if you take the 4.5%, it's really 2.25% over two years, which is closer to our revenue stream. So, and we submitted or asked for submissions from 30 different companies on the whole packages. So we have a real good relationship with the brokerage firm that we use for both districts. And we're both very satisfied with the work that they do. They also support us for training programs. And just for whenever we have a claim, they just pretty much walk it through for us. So, right, we're asking for a 5.7% increase in the total insurance cost for next year.
Questions?
It'll be in the action item.
Thumbs up. Thank you. Good job.
457 and 403?
This has come to the board, I think in a prior meeting and several memos. This is just a slight amendment that allows the district to make direct contributions to those two plans rather than it having to be funneled through the employee. This is pretty standard in school districts. These are slight amendments as presented and recommended to be approved tonight. Any questions on those?
Thank you. Bulk purchasing?
All right. Bulk purchasing CMG supplies. Jim went out and, as he does every year, submitted for bids and then we award the bids inside of those smaller bids on individual items. Then he groups them all together and makes a recommendation to the board. You've seen that full memo and recommendation. So Jim is recommending tonight that the board approves the aggregate amount of $112,876.31 for all of the custodial supplies for the next year. Questions on that one? Next one's very similar. It's on copy paper. This has come to the board every year. When I got here, the board set some goals about decreasing use of paper, especially as we increase the use of technology. We've accomplished that goal very well, year after year. I kind of went back and did a five-year look as we prepared this one. And you can see that this budget was over $60,000 per year, five years ago. And now we're getting close to about $20,000 a year in that budget. So we're accomplishing that goal set by the board as well. This is an action item later tonight to accept that lowest bidder in the amount of $21,657.80. Questions on that one?
Nope.
Master Facility Plan. Few things going on with this. We continue to be on budget, ahead of schedule, well, on schedule. You can see where we sit with this, that we're currently sitting with a contingency of $486,000 about. Some of that is movement between funds as we close out certain accounts and all of that kind of stuff. The big one this month was FFNE, Fixtures, Furniture and Equipment as we finalize what we need in those budgets. Those, as we've done in prior months, flow back into recommendations for the board to complete scope that we originally hoped when we talked to the community about getting this project done, but then had to scale back to make sure that we would be in budget. Now that we're within budget, we're trying to release back in projects that we originally talked about. A big one here that was a huge discussion point of community members as we did the master facility plan in the referendum is classroom improvements. So you can see, we're starting to allocate more and more of the resources that are being freed up to specific individual classrooms. What's nice about those is that Jim is able to kind of hold that money off to the side until the summer is done because those are, it's supplies that we order and then our team will replace the lighting, the flooring, repaint the rooms, those kinds of things. So it's really a supply budget in some ways to get that equipment in, those capital items in. And then over the course of the year, we can just keep turning over room after room, which is a nice way to say, hey, we're going to set aside $400,000 because we have this contingency, we're going to plan towards it, but we're not going to spend any of that until we're really done this summer just in case something should go wrong that was unexpected. So, and I think you're going to see more and more as contingency is freed up, us putting it into that classroom remodeling plan and get as many of those classrooms up to date as we possibly can, which was always the plan.
Also, by, the longer we wait to make those purchases, I think the more we'll get for our money going forward. My speculation, but just, you know, looking at supply chain issues and stuff I see in my, in my work world.
Are you saying costs are going to go down instead of up?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. So many, so many things are, you know, in short supply and are artificially inflated because of that right now. So there'll be, there's some leveling off and dropping down. So I suspect that we'll get more for our money pushing things off a little bit. Not indefinitely, you know, because eventually prices, you know. It's, I think things are going to get better. I hope, I pray.
So that's kind of where we're sitting right now?
Yes. That's good news.
It is good news. Just some pictures I share every month with the board. South High Auditorium. Seats are in place and the walls are all getting finished. It's beautiful space. South High Learning Commons. You can see, starting to feel like a finished space. North Commons. We've got a lot of ancillary spaces that are getting, as we talked about at the last board meeting, that are attached to the commons that need to get cleaned up as part of this. That was from last month. All right. And then, oh, any questions on Master Facility Plan beyond that?
No.
It's just so exciting.
Yeah, it's really coming along.
It is. You know, I was, actually wanted to mention too that thinking about next year plans and how we potentially, things that we might have to deal with with COVID, having our facilities done and having additional space allows us more, you know, more options in how we deal with things than we had a year ago.
Yeah.
And so that's something to be, you know, positive about. And, you know, while it may not fix everything, it's certainly something we'll have at our disposal that we didn't have before. And that's helpful.
All right. For your requests, as always, we've received them and they're posted on our website. Before we close the superintendent's report at the beginning, I was distracted. I do want to point out two important things going on. One, our community was unfortunately hit by some extreme weather.
Right.
Last night throughout the day, I've kept close contact with District 68 with the Village of Woodridge. We have offered them any assistance that they need from our custodial maintenance group or, you know, if they need anything at all, they know that they can reach out to us and we will support them. I know they've done a lot of just, I know the administration in District 68 was helping people clean their, clear their driveways today and they were out working. The village has been very supportive. We have heard from many of our families that were impacted and we will continue to support them. I know Ed was reaching out to families throughout the day to make sure that they knew we were here for them. I put out a note that encouraged people to reach out to the district office if they need anything from us. And we'll continue to support people as we go. Actually, Janice, I think, had a few impacted at North as well. So we'll continue to support families in any way we can throughout this. And I'm glad that overall, it sounds like there were no significant injuries as a result of this. So thank you, Modern Science, for letting us know that the bad weather was coming. And then the other thing that I need to point out this evening is this is Janice's final board meeting of this. So thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
And.
We're not glad you're going, we're just.
We're happy for you, actually. Yes, yes.
And that is the end of the superintendent's report.
You know, just if a community member thought we could help them, what kind of help would we provide? Certainly we could help with some meals, what other kinds, which I would not immediately think of schools providing, but we do provide meals.
Sure.
What else would we do?
It would depend on the family. So anything that they need, reach out to. Either we would provide that or we'd work with the community providers to partner them with that. Like right now, we know that Woodridge has some, an organization working to provide meals. So that might not come from us, it might come from that. So just as we do with any family that's in need, they'll reach out to us. We'll talk through what they need and then if we need help, we'll ask for it. And, you know, the community always delivers when we ask for help like that, so.
Thank you.
So, yeah, if somebody needs it, reach out to us and we'll talk. So, yeah, if somebody needs it, reach out to us and we'll talk to them and figure out what we can do to help.
Anything else? So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the board wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Is Chris still in?
Yes, Chris, I believe, is still on.
Yes, I am.
Did you, did you have anything you wanted to speak about specifically?
Was there anything you wanted to remove and talk, from the consent agenda and talk about individually?
I need no.
Okay. Then I need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes personnel report, appointments certified, leave of absence certified, transfer of position classified, appointments classified, personnel reports, retirements, administration, retirements classified, resignations certified, resignations classified, financial pages, 2021, 2022 amended calendar, property and liability, insurance renewals, employer contribution amendment to the Community High School District 99, 457B retirement plan, the 403B retirement plan, adoption agreement, and resolution of nomination for membership on the Downward Scroll Plan Commission.
So moved.
Second. With a heavy heart, I second.
That's really nice, but I think Joanna beat you to it. So it's Mike and Joanna. And Terry's heavy heart comes in third.
I got you wordy.
Yeah, I got you wordy.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The consent agenda is adoption, is adopted. Now we'll move on for recommendations for action. First, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the District 99 Consolidated District Plan as presented by Gina for submission to the Illinois State Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Terry.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the request for qualification strategic plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and, I think there was Cheryl.
I think Cheryl beat her.
Okay.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the one-year trial period food service agreement with Chartwell's and opt out of the USDA meal program.
I'll second.
Terry and Mike.
Thank you. Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the, to approve awarding the contract for custodial maintenance and ground supplies to the noted vendors in the aggregate amount of $112,876.31.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Joanna.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve an award of, for a contract to Midland Paper, Wheeling, Illinois, for copier paper, excuse me, copier paper for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 in the amount of $21,657.80.
So moved.
Second.
Mike and Joanna.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to hold the Monday, Monday, July 12, 2021 Board of Education meeting entirely in closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony and a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the district, or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
So moved.
Wow.
Mike and Cheryl, I think.
Well, I have a question. Is it, is it, can I ask a question now or no?
Sure.
Yes. Okay.
I'm, I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I, I believe that a point of clarification earlier today about that meeting was someone thought we were going to have our meetings entirely in closed session. I wanted to make a point that this is a, an additional meeting and it's not our first and third meeting that we're having-
Right.
-in order to discuss this. So I, I wanted to make that point of clarification because I think that was the misinterpretation of the communication earlier.
Thank you.
That's excellent. Yes.
Special, it's a special board meeting entirely in closed session.
Right.
Exactly. Okay.
So moved.
Second. Terry and Cheryl.
I thought Mike and Cheryl.
Yeah, Mike and Cheryl. I already, yeah, it had to be moved harder to ask the question.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. We're still, we're good now? Okay.
Yes.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Thank you. And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. And finally, the motion for the Board of Education to adopt the findings of the complaint manager related to uniform grievance complaint number 52021.
So moved.
Second.
I didn't hear who moved. Terry and Mike. Was it Terry?
It was me, Joanna.
I'm sorry, Joanna. Terry slipped. It's Joanna and Mike.
Joanna and Mike. Thank you. Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. The motion carries. That concludes our action items. We move on to communications and announcements. Report on Legislative Education Network of DuPage.
We haven't had a recent meeting. It's-
We had just the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Summertime it goes down. Joanna, do you have a report on the asset?
No report.
Terry, 99 Foundation?
No report, but just so you know, Julia Beckman had a hip replacement last week, so.
She's doing okay?
Yeah. She's doing great. They said she's around and doing great. So, but just so you know.
She's pretty formidable. Julia's doing-
Yeah. Yes, she's tough.
Yeah. So, but I think she was up in Wisconsin and did it. With her daughter that's a doctor.
So the Ed Foundation will resume business in July as a result?
Yeah. We got moved back a little.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything on the Illinois Association of School Boards? Probably not.
Chris, anything to report on Illinois Association of School Boards?
Oh, no, not as far as I know. I have signed up for the conference in November, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And I, Julia sent me the information on that.
Great. Just as an aside, District 99 will be hosting the DuPage Divisional Meeting, either spring or fall, to be determined. So.
I think that's a great-
I believe that Ed will volunteer that Courtney do that. That's been the theme over the last week.
Okay. So we have upcoming board meetings, again, July 12th, which will be totally closed, to Cheryl's point. This is not in place of an, it's not-
It's an extra meeting.
It's an extra meeting. It is not going to be continuation. That will be meeting in closed session all along. And this is specifically to work on some employment issues. And then on July 19th, we're going to have our regular business meeting at 6:30 PM here at South.
Well, location to be determined, because it depends on the government's executive order and everything else. So.
Well, okay. Stay tuned.